Let's do that again. Peace to the fam. Manina Uhuru, appreciate everybody for joining. This is another Blueprint for Black Power Study Session. I am the Kimba Ojori. And you know, I'm looking forward to this examination as usual. Make sure if you're viewing this, subscribe to the channel if you haven't already subscribed. And make sure that you like and share this podcast. Very important podcast as we continue to examine Dr. Emerson Wilson's text. The Blueprint for Black Power, one of the most important texts that a black man should have, especially in the struggle for liberation, for autonomy. That's the only thing we should be striving for as black as African people in this day and age. And so, the Blueprint for Black Power, A Moral, Political, and Economic Comparative For The 21st Century, by Dr. Emerson Wilson. And when he wrote this book in the 90s, in the early 90s, I think it was published maybe posthumously. Dr. Emerson Wilson, I think transitioned in 1995. I gotta check that exact date, but I believe it was 1995. And the book was published about a year, two years later. And so, you know, even when you look at the title of this text, it's already looking forward to the 21st century. It's Dr. Emerson Wilson was looking to prepare us for the 21st century. And so, that's why, you know, I honored his brother and I examined this book the way that I do. Because he literally spent his, the rest, the later, the later half of his life. Short life it was, I think he transitioned in his 50s. But he literally transitioned while giving us this text. So, you know, it's incumbent upon us to study this, to read this, you know, for our ancestors. With that being said, I'm doing the summary today. I'm completing chapter one. Yes, I'm really finishing chapter one today. And we'll move into chapter two. If I have, depending on how much time I take, I might go into chapter two a bit today. But if not, you know, we'll save it for another day. Because I want to take my time as I, you know, go through these chapters and I go through these paragraphs. Want us to get everything Dr. Wilson is giving us. So with that being said, I wanted to start off with just a little clip. Just a couple of minutes of Dr. Wilson speaking to us. I'm gonna share my screen. And peace to everybody for joining. Always good to see you all. We're gonna get it in tonight. I'm actually, after I finish this summary, plan to just do a recap of the entire chapter. Let's see. So we're gonna get it in, but let's start off, let's hear Dr. Wilson and his words. Listen to a couple of minutes.
Somewhere back there. That. And you got some so-called black conservatives who claim that slavery no longer influences the nature of African people. I wonder what those people have to conserve in the first place? Are they conserving power? They conserving wealth? What does a black conservative conserve? You have to conserve something. And since they have very little, if anything, they must only be conserving the system that has created their poverty to begin with. And you see them ultimately justifying the poverty of African people and justifying the political and social and economics subordination of African people in the name of some kind of higher principles. So slavery is not supposed, the experience of slavery is not supposed to be operating in the mentality of black folk. You hear a lot of our youngsters will say that as well. How do you talk about slavery? That was back there. Or you know, whites talked about that. Well, you know, that was back there. We don't have anything to do with that anymore. You see? And it's an amazing situation because you have to remind them that you're still living off the interests of the wealth that your forefathers earned from slavery. You are still enjoying the accumulated wealth that began with the enslavement of our people. And if you're going to enjoy the wealth that was generated by evil, then you must take the curse that comes along with it. And therefore, even though you personally had nothing to do with it, but because you have received stolen goods, you must pay the price as well.
Hey, let me stop it there. Let me stop it there. We can get caught up in the words of Dr. Emerson Wilson, but you heard what he said. You know, those who benefit from this system, you know, they're gonna have to pay the price unless they are willing to make amends for what their ancestors did to our ancestors. But it's not just about what happened in the past, it's how a system that was established, a system that was created to benefit white people. That system is still intact. That system is still in place to this day. When did that system, when was that system destroyed? Now, we can point to chattel slavery in the South and say, okay, that system was destroyed. Southern plantation slavery was destroyed after the Civil War. That's that system itself, right? But what happened was chattel slavery just transformed to a different type of slavery. The ruling class, the elite in this country, the white ruling class, still maintain political economic domination over African lives, African bodies and people, right? And still was able to benefit and still to this day are still able to benefit from the vast amount of labor that African people are putting in, in this country and around the world. So that's, that system hasn't been destroyed. It just has been reformed. That's all. It's just been reformed and they keep on reforming the system. But with that being said, those people who are benefiting from this very system, you know, they're gonna have to pay the price because the wealth of this, the wealth of the nation, the wealth of European nations, the wealth of the United States is a direct result of the transatlantic slave trade. It's a direct result of the enslavement of African people. It's a direct result of the theft of indigenous people land and even African land. They took some land over there on the continent. We had to get some of that back. But they're still there and they're still able to exploit the resources through the neo-colonials. Africans who are looking to conserve that, like Dr. Emerson Wilson was talking about, the conservative black man and woman, African man and woman, right? And what they're trying to conserve is their position within the colonial state, within the colonial institution, you know, because they want to conserve their position because they have been able to benefit, relatively benefit from the system. They're not down here at the bottom like the masses of African people, you know, but they're still not at the top with the ruling class. But they're able to get some of the crumbs and able to live, you know, comfortably under colonialism while the masses of their brothers and sisters are stargazing. And so, they're gonna have to pay the price just like, you know, the European who's oppressing and exploiting us, right? I'm sorry, you know, I mean, that's the reality. But let's get into this text, man. I'm gonna go through the summary. And then I'm gonna recap chapter one, and if I have some time, I'll do chapter two. But it is, you know, kind of late, so let me jump right into it. I'm on page 23 for anybody that's following along in the book. This is the Blueprint for Black Power by Dr. Emerson Wilson. Page 23, this is the summary, White Domination, Black Subordination. All of the forms of power we have discussed, as well as those not discussed here, when used by whites to maintain their power over blacks, add up to the overarching social power relation between whites and blacks. White domination, black subordination, right? And so, you know, you notice he said the forms of power that was discussed and forms of power that were not discussed. So there's still other methods of exercising power over the lives of African people that wasn't even discussed here. I think he just kind of just touched on some of the most prevalent, pervasive forms of power, I should say, that are used, right? Are the ones that are used the most frequently against African people. He discussed in these chapters, in this chapter in particular. So in the next paragraph, he says, "Social domination occurs when the power of one person or group over another is exercised in a systematic way, manner, at the expense of the dominated person or group." Wardenburg uses the term domination to refer to the power that one social agent has over another in situations in which that power is exercised by the dominating social agent repeatedly, systematically, into the detriment of the dominated agent. The concept of domination therefore refers to a specific manner of exercising power. Such an exercise of power must be one that conditions the relationship between two agents in a longstanding manner. Domination refers not to a single exercise of power, but to a relationship between two social agents that is constituted by the existence of a power differential between them, right? And so, just to, you know, elaborate on that point right there, what Dr. Wilson is saying is that it's not just this single act. Like I can exercise power over someone one time, right? I can exercise power. But when we're talking about domination, at least in this context, he's talking about the repeated exercise of power over it. It becomes a part of, it almost seems natural. It becomes an actual part of, yeah, every day. It becomes part of the culture. Domination becomes part of the culture. And so, our domination under this system, it seems like is natural. It seems like just, you know, waking up, getting out of bed, walking, talking. You know, that's how domination is occurring. It's like, we don't even, except those quote unquote are woke, right? But those who are conscious of this relationship, we're able to see racism. We're able to see colonialism when it rares its head. But most people not, don't even see. A lot of people have accepted the conditions that they are in for what it is, you know, because they just feel like that there's nothing outside of, I mean, if you think about it, if you're born into it, it's very difficult. You don't see anything outside of your everyday reality, right? Which is a reality that has been created for you, you know, through manipulation, influence and so forth. So this is what he's getting at. So he's talking about this relationship. We're talking about domination. It's an ongoing relationship between black and white people, African and European people in this country and all those other people who want to get involved, right? But also around the world, because when you go on the continent, you go and go on the islands, you'll see Chinese people there. You'll see Indian people, you know, dominating African people in some, in some places and even here in the States. So it's not just the European that's getting in on the action. But what the European has done is made the African vulnerable. He's made the African vulnerable to all types of attacks from all groups of people, right? And so, if those group of people are not aligning themselves with the oppressed, if they're not aligning themselves with African people, then they're working with our enemy. Then they're working against us, right? So we have to be very conscious of who's working with us and who's working against us. So, but I think this is an important thing to just like really keep in mind, right? So this domination, we're talking about domination, it's an ongoing thing. It's a system, colonialism, slavery, these are systems of domination, right? So our characterization on page 24, "Our characterization of the white American, black American power relationship as one of which white domination of blacks is based on the fact that in large part, the white American power structure possesses and uses this ability to adversely affect the welfare of blacks to further its own interests and to the detriment of those of blacks." "The subordination of people of color is functional to the operation of American society as we know it, and the color of one's skin is a primary determinant of people's position in a social power structure. Racism is a structural relationship based on the subordination of one racial group by another. Given this perspective, the determining feature of race relations is not prejudice towards blacks, but rather the superior position of whites in the institutions, ideological as well as structural, which maintain it." I love this, man. Dr. Wilson is a materialist, man. He's a materialist. I mean, it's just, I want to read this again so we clear it because we know racism is a problem. We know it's a problem, but we're not getting to the root of it, man. And we're not, you know, focusing on what we need to do as a people if we're fighting against racism. Chairman Omalia Satella, Chairman of the African People Socialist Party, you know, Uhuru, he talks about this. He talks about, we ain't fighting against racism, you know. Let me read this, what Dr. Wilson's saying. He said, "Racism is a structural relationship based on the subordination of one racial group by another." Racism is based on that. "Given this perspective, the determining feature of race relations is not prejudice towards blacks, the determinant feature, but rather the superior position of whites in the institutions, ideological as well as structural, which maintain it. It's those institutions that the white people control, right? That's the basis of their support." It wouldn't matter if they white, green or whatever, you know what I'm saying? They could look just like, they could be African, right? It's the institutions that they control that is the basis of their exploitation and oppression of African people. You know, that's the basis of it. All the other stuff, man, when they're developing ideologies, they're developing, you know, these philosophies and theories to rationalize their position, right? That's when all of that comes in, but the crux of it, the root of it all is that they want to have, be able to maintain control, or first acquire or attain that control over key resources and over black bodies. And then once they do that, they need to rationalize that for themselves and for other people, you know, who may look at them sideways and look at, you know, look at them as the imperialists that they are. So, you know, going into the next, the last paragraph in page 24, he says, "The power relationship between blacks and whites is an interactive one, one where white power to a significant extent arises out of certain types of social interactions between whites and blacks, where blacks unwittingly play a very important role in constituting and sustaining their powerlessness relative to whites." "White domination of blacks in our current social context is primarily facilitated by the fact that blacks think of themselves and of reality in terms created by their self-serving interests and perspectives imposed on them by whites and act on the basis of bias and false information proven them by whites without realizing it." This goes to indoctrination, miseducation, those things. So, looking at the, I gotta go through this. I'm gonna go through that chat in a second. I see a lot being, a lot is being said, but, um, but yeah, so, uh, what is he saying right here? He's getting into the blacks, blacks being manipulated, being miseducated, indoctrinated and serving white power. This goes back to even that video we was watching when Dr. Wilson is talking about blacks, conservative blacks. What are they conserving? What are black people conserving and under a racial system? Under a colonial system? What are you conserving? When you are the oppressed, when you are the colonized, what is it? So, you know, just to go back over there, he said, "White domination of blacks in our current social context is primarily facilitated by the fact that blacks think of themselves and of reality in terms created by self-serving interests and perspectives imposed on them by whites." This kind of makes me think of The Boys, when Dr. The Boys talks about the double consciousness, right? He's talking about the confusion that black people had. I remember I was listening to Marcus Garvey's son. Dr. Garvey came to our school and he was speaking. He gave a presentation. Somebody asked him a question about The Boys and Garvey, like the differences that they had and so forth. But I remember Garvey's son, he was, he was talking about these, he said, "The Boys was confused." He's like, "Remember The Boys, he had this double consciousness." He said, "Garvey was not confused about who he was," right? I thought everybody was laughing, but, uh, but powerful point though he was making. But this goes back to this text though. He's talking about this double consciousness right here, when he's talking about blacks thinking of themselves in their reality through the lens of the European. But they also have this black experience though, so they can't fully see it as a European because they're on the outside. But through the education and indoctrination, they're gaining an understanding, a perception of the world that is based off of this doctrine that is being fed to them. And so, they have this false consciousness. This goes back to Dr. Anderson Wilson's book, The Falsification of African Consciousness, which is a book that we covered on this, on this channel, which if you haven't seen that, you know, go back, you know, subscribe to the channel, go back and check out when we covered that book. But this is what he's talking about here. "They therefore contribute to their powerlessness and domination by whites simply by thinking about themselves in reality in a manner that allows them to be subjugated. Thus, white domination of blacks is, to a significant degree, covered over by ideology, beliefs, which blacks have been conditioned by whites to unwittingly accept. To this degree, their domination and powerlessness is self-imposed," right? This is neo-colonialism, man, but we can't put it all on a neo-colonialist because the masses of African people, right, are engaged in this system, right? We, you know, work, go to work, get up and go to work every day. We take our money and we spend it with these corporations, with these colonizers, right? And I know sometimes it just seems like where, you know, what else can we do? But there are options, man. Like you gotta find black businesses, you gotta find. And I understand too, like just spending your money with black people is not going to dismantle this system, right? Because they need some political education as well. Because when they take your resources, what are they doing with the resources? So we have to create a system outside of this, outside of the colonial system. Or if it's within the colonial system, our system has to be like really tight. And before we engage outside of our own system, you know, with the dominant system, we have done enough to help us separate from the dominant system, the dominant culture, right? Because it's going to be difficult for us to completely separate, you know, at this moment. But that has to be the idea, like that has to be the objective. So we have to always be very conscious of what we doing in regards to, A, I'm about to, I'm about to take my resources and empower the system, the system of colonialism. Is there another option right now? Let me think. We have to be like that, you know, in our lives. We have to be very meticulous and the way that we move within the system. If we're serious about revolution, you know, I know that I am. I know that I am, and I'm trying to get everybody else on board, you know what I'm saying? That's why we need to study this book and develop revolutionary strategy. So with that being said, where I'm at. The white, thus white domination of blacks self-imposed, right? "So blacks obscure their unnecessary domination by whites and contribute to that domination by their own gullibility and to ready acceptance of Eurocentric ideology and their obsequious willingness to think and act only within the confines of white-generated ideas, social definitions, relations and ethics, ethics not often honored by whites themselves. Hence, the minds of blacks are used to forge the links of their own mental chains." Read that again. "The minds of blacks are used to forge the links of their own mental chains." What Steve Beek will say, "The most potent weapon in the mind of the oppressors is the minds of the oppressed." I hope I got that correct. I know it's something along those lines though. The most potent weapon of, in the hands of the oppressors, the minds of the oppressed, alright? So the same thing applies to what Dr. Emerson Wilson is saying, Amos Wilson is saying right here. So, Dr. Naim Akbar writes a book, Breaking the Chain, Breaking the Psychological Chains of Slavery. That's a book we have to read. All of the tools that we need has been given to us. I'm talking about in the 80s and the 90s, man, our scholars were on it. I'm trying to think like, where are all these scholars today? I'm saying that there's none out there, but I just, you know, where are the Dr. John Henry Clarks? The Dr. Anderson Wilsons? Dr. Naim Akbar is still with us, you know, he was a lot more active, you know, in regards to published works in the 80s and the 90s. The Dr. Bobby E. Wrights, these were some serious, you know, man, scholars that were putting it in, African-centered scholars. And so, we got to get, we need for these, Jacob, Dr. Jacob Carruthers. You know, a lot of our revolutionary scholars have transitioned, man, but we still have some that are with us, you know. But this is, this is important. Let me, let me go to this next paragraph. I'm on page 25. This is the last, okay. Then, page 25, first paragraph. "When Africans in the Americas and the world over choose to critically examine and receive ideas and biased perceptions of reality, imposing them by Europeans and choosing the reality for what it is to create themselves through gaining a thorough knowledge of self, knowledge of the world and through studying and acquiring power, they will then have attained the keys to their own liberation." And this, you know, message is a hard pill for a lot, lot of black people to swallow. I'm telling you, like, this is, a lot of people are not gonna want to tune into this conversation. They don't want to read this book. They don't want to read any of Dr. Emerson Wilson's books or any of the revolutionary scholars, especially the African-centered scholars. Because they are gonna tell us about ourselves. They gonna tell us how brainwashed we are. They gonna tell us that we're being gullible. Like when we see these words, he uses this word here. He says, "Contribute to that domination by their own gullibility." He's talking about us. This is, Malcolm made a lot of black people mad, Malcolm X, because of the language that he used to describe us. But you know, it's, it's a reality. It's real. It's straight talk though, you know? And they're trying to give it to us plain. And we can't be so caught up in our emotions that we can't see the truth in the words that's being spoken. Because it's important for us to break the chain psychological trains of slavery, but we have to acknowledge it, right? And so, you know, this is arming, most people who tune into this are already on it. But we have to understand like, this is, you know, we have to talk to our people like this. We have to come at them and give it to them straight. And, you know, understanding that it's, it's gonna be a struggle because a lot of our people are thinking like this. Not as far as Dr. Emerson Wilson, but being thinking like the European, looking at the world through that lens. And so, you already know, we have these conversations where people is almost going in one ear and out the other. You know, it's hard for them to listen. Because they have been, it's that cognitive dissonance, man. They've been so ingrained with, with the system, the information that the system is given. They overwhelmed by it that they only can see the world in the way that it has been, you know, taught to them. And so, again, like it's almost like a reprogramming that has to take place, you know, re-education. Actually, they never been educated properly. So, you know, so, you know, they have to be educated, they have to be reprogrammed, all of these things to get them to think in straight. Like me, you can, I can, you know, listen to a person, you know, describe my actions in a way, be very critical of my actions and I can, you know, I can take it without being very sensitive and emotional about it because I understand how impacted all of us, even the most conscious of us, have been impacted by Eurocentrism and we're still, it's a lifetime journey to try to break it. So let me finish this up. I keep saying I'm gonna finish. I'm definitely gonna finish this chapter. I'm going straight through now. I keep saying I'm a finish, I'm definitely gonna finish this chapter. I'm going straight through now. Even a cursory review of the relations of the social domination of blacks by whites demonstrates. It repeatedly systematic and detrimental nature. All of the types and forms of power we have so far discussed, as well as others not discussed, have been and are currently used. By hegemonic whites to maintain a system of social domination immensely beneficial to them. As it is devastating, devastatingly detrimental to blacks. The use of sheer unendored physical force as a means of dominating blacks. Have been used by whites from the sixteenth century to the present moment, even before that, even before that, we can go back to the fifteenth century. Dealing with these Europeans, it has, it has assumed many forms from war, captivity, lynching, beating, torture, mild violence. Police brutality and repression to martial law and the like. The threatened use of physical, police and military force stands behind white power and all this deceptive metamorphosis. But more effective and deeply enduring than the use of physical force. Or the coercive threat to use it in maintaining the domination of whites over black. Is the long-term use by whites of harshly unrelenting psychic violence against the collective black persona. For this violence more effectively neutralizes black opposition. To impossible overthrow of white domination than the preponderance of white military white might, mights. Psychic violence hobbles the most powerful of human weapons. The human mind and its productive creativity, ingenuity, innovativeness and vision. Moreover, it hobbles the human capacity to develop and press into service the social identity, social consciousness. Unity and solidarity and the cooperative social spirit, which combine and power a race to overcome impossible odds. By other hostile and apparently more powerful races of men. Psychic violence makes the victimized individual or group vulnerable to the saw. Yet ultimately more treacherous and effective forms of social domination. Social coercion, influence, manipulation, allegedly legitimate and competent authority. And ideological hypnosis. Nothing less than the healing of the wounds occasioned by white-instigated psychic assaults. Against the collective African mind, body and spirit can enable African people to regain their liberation. A deep and fundamental transformation of the subordinated African psyche. Via the steadfast acquisition of an African-centered consciousness and identity will provide. The social, psychological and if need be, military power tools for breaking through the imprisoning walls of white supremacy. However, in this liberating African-centered consciousness and identity must be included in indomitable will to African power. This will must be informed by profound knowledge of the means of acquiring and of the exercising of power. As well as the strategic and tactical knowledge of the enemy's power. To an examination of these factors, we will now turn. Alright, and that brings chapter one to a conclusion. We put in this work. Man, this is podcast, I think, number eighteen. We put in this work to get through this chapter right here and um I know I'm proud of myself, man. Uh yo, a- a- again, he's touching on, this was a summary of what was discussed throughout this uh chapter. He touched on that psychic violence again, um you know, I, he emphasized that for a reason. Uh because that type of um power that you have, that type of power that's exercised. Over a people can have a lasting effect. It can impact generations. It can impact generations psychic violence, right? Because you instill that fear into your children. And your children will instill that fear into their children. And so, uh Dr. Joy Day grew and we know her work, hopefully if not, you know, um. Make sure that you go and look at her research, the uh uh post, the book Post-Dramatic Slave Syndrome. Um and she talks about this transmission of trauma from one generation to the next. And uh and I think like, um you know, we have to be very conscious of the psychic violence that's used. Uh in the community, uh particularly through the media though, it's, it's easy for them to be able to. Uh um use psychic violence through the television, through the uh through social media. All of these media outlets, right? Um through propaganda, uh so they, you know, they're inside of our house. Without, you know, like they don't even have to make physical contact with us to be able to have the impact on us, right? They're able to impact us through um through the computers, through the TV. This is why we have to be very conscious of what our children. Are being exposed to, right? At a young age, the, all of the psychic violence and then, um. You know, because when we talk about psychic violence, this, this fear is, is like bullying, is, is, is bullying, someone's being bullied all the time, right? Um think of the impact that, that, that that's gonna have on a person who's being bullied by someone. It's, it's fair that now the bully doesn't necessarily, at first the bully might use physical force, right? Um and then after the physical force, think about it in terms of our group as, as, as African people in our history when I'm using this. Analogy, but um you know, the bully first uses physical force, right? Um whether punching on, you know, the person who's um. Doesn't have maybe the strength to, or, or the mental fortitude to defend themselves, right? Um they're bullying them, they're hitting them, using physical, but after a while, they no longer have to use the physical. Um uh violence against them, right? That force, force them to get some, you know, give that money up, right? That sort of thing. Um and so, after a while, now that person, there's that threatened use of force, that's the coercion. Now we're going into coercion. Um you know, give me that or I'm gonna punch you in your face. Sort of thing, going back to the bully. Give me what I want or this is gonna happen to you, right? So it's the threatened use of force now. You went from using physical force to the threatened use of force. Um and now, you know, like it, the, the, which the coercion, the threatened use of force is a psychic violence as well. So you coerce in a person and it's also that psychic violence where you scared that this person is gonna do something to you. If you try to defend yourself or you don't give, give the person what they want. And so, this is a situation that we find ourselves in, in this country where. You know, there's a lot of people who know that the system is against that. And the, the people who understand the system, you'd be surprised, like it's the, these are people that don't necessarily have to pick up a book to understand. The exploitation that is taking place, you know, when they get their check and they look at their check. It's like, hold on, I did all of this work and this is all that I got. You know, they understand fundamentally that there's something wrong with the system, but do they do anything about it, right? And after a while, what they, what, what will they do? They might show, show out at work. Because they, hey, I don't like this job anyway, I don't get paid enough, right? And so now they're looking for a reason to get fired, they don't work as hard, you know, those sort of things happen, but. They don't do anything though to overturn the system of exploitation. Because when they, behind gets fired, what do they do now? They go and seek a job for. For someone else, from the same exploit, the same system, they still stay a part of this work within the system. And just go somewhere else and get exploited by another employer. And they just like going along till they find somebody that, you know, okay, they're giving me more than this person gave me. But at the end of the day, you know, it's still exploitation, it's still, you're not getting what you should for the value of your labor, the value of your work. The workers produce everything within this society, man. Uh damn Burger King wouldn't be nothing if the workers weren't in there. Flipping burgers, frying, the, the damn uh owner of Burger King is not gonna go in there and do it himself, right? He's gonna sit back because he thinks he's some sort of, sort of genius because he took his money and was able to. Invest and start a Burger King, he's a genius now, right? And now I'm gonna get these workers and have these workers come in here and I'm just gonna pay them this, this is what the market, the market says, get paid this. I'm gonna give them this. I don't care if it's not enough for them to survive, you know, the, that. Because they, it's this detachment that they have, these are just workers, these are just slaves, think about it. You know, but the difference between chattel slavery is that they look, the, the uh slave master, you know, the enslaver. He looked at the enslaved as property, so he wanted to make sure that they remain healthy. Um you know, that they, they didn't get the best, you know, clothes, anything like that, but he wanted to make sure. That that enslaved person um was able to do the work, you know, he. And he, he invested in that, that property, so when it comes to um, you know, work, if they're not doing what they're supposed. Hey, I fire this person, get rid of him and just bring somebody else in, you know, um so, there's this detachment. That they have in both cases, though both cases is horrible, I can't even, I don't even know, you know, it sound like I'm romanticizing slavery now, but. Um but it's just still like, in both cases is wrong, but it's just a different dynamic, you know, at the end of the day. Um but, yeah, so you know, this brings this chapter to a close. I did have, let me see, nah, I'm, I'm gonna do a recap though. Mate, let me see, I'm gonna do a recap. You know what, my people? I'm gonna wait to do the recap. I'm gonna wait to do the recap. Let me go through this though. Because my recap is going, I know, I, I probably be another hour going through this recap. Uh because I got like a PowerPoint that I'm gonna go through, uh just to touch on everything that was uh discussed in chapter one. So I'm gonna save that because I know it's gonna be a little lengthy. And I had to get up in the morning, man, but um, you know, and I'm going, I'm doing some outreach tomorrow. I'm gonna be in the community organizing folks, eh, the revolution did not stop on this channel. You know, the revolution won't be televised, this discussion right here, we having little discussion, there's nothing wrong with this. But when it comes to the strategy and things that we're going doing, gonna do. Uh to fulfill the mission, the objective, to liberate our people. Dr. Emerson Wilson gave us this because he wants us to be liberated, man. He wants us, black power, you know, black nationalism is what Dr. Emerson Wilson is talking about. And so, um you know, we wants to, we want to fulfill uh his vision, but this should be a vision for all of us. This is a vision that we're trying to fulfill for ourselves, so, you know, peace to, to everybody, joy. Uh let me see, I know y'all was just going in, the systems was never destroyed. Absolutely, they were just morphed into one other things in the same game is being played to this day. Uh shame, uh shame, same, same games, I, that's what, ah man. It's, it's so difficult, I think that's the conditioning, right? That's the conditioning. Where they're able to do the same thing, but we are less cautious of what's taking place. To us, you know, because of the changes, because of the indoctrination, so many things that are working. Uh and this goes back to the different forms of power, like there's different methods to subject African people. There's different methods that's being used, so all of those methods that are being used is creating, is shaping. The minds and the bodies and the spirits of African people. And so we are a result of that, and there's this agency that we have where we're pushing back and we, you know, we do wanna exist. Um but, you know, I, I, I think like there's these different. Ideas that we have in regards to what that existence look like, what our reality should look like. What existing for African people should look like, and there's people who feel like existence means. Integrating or assimilating within the system of domination. And there's, you know, some of us who believe that, you know, existence for us means self-determination. Separating ourselves from the system of exploitation, right? But it takes this consciousness, it takes a understanding of the system. Some people just don't have the analysis to be able to. Explain and understand uh what is at work. Uh so there's, you know, there's a lot to this, um you know, give me centuries of free labor and I guarantee. I'll become wealthy, anyone's why, yeah, that's all of this, man, like the system of capitalism, you think about. Uh the colonial capitalist system, right? The system that we're all a part of. Uh it wouldn't have been able to develop without the enslavement of African people. The transatlantic slave trade and the theft of indigenous people land is what helped, you know, propel Europeans. Into the future, man. If you think about it, you know, if um, you know, all of the wealth that they generated. From Spain to Portugal, Dutch, Fr- all of that was being act, they were obtained, they were acquiring that wealth from outside. Of their um region, outside of their nations. Excuse me, the, you know, the Dutch acquired, they, they had colonies, Spain had colonies, Portugal had colonies, France had colonies. Um uh Britain had colonies, then Belgium got in, in on it, you know, Germany got in on it, like all of these places. Had colonies, man, um like the other country, nu- um Sweden, Switzerland. Like these nations as well benefited from, you had New Sweden, that was the Dutch, they called the New Sweden, but uh. They, there still was a relationship, they was able to benefit from it. But you know, all in all, they still, you know, were able to benefit from the exploitation because when the Europeans were able to dominate these places. Um they were able to get in on the exploitation or oppression of these places by sending. You know, under capitalism, they were able to send people, corporations, companies, be able to go into these places. Uh Africa, go to the Americas and be able to exploit the land for his resources, exploit the people, right? It was open rain for all Europeans, of all likes, all kinds, right? As long as his skin was right, you know, and you can come in, probably, you know, at one point come in, they don't know if you. Jewish, Irish, uh Spanish, Portug- Portuguese, you know what I'm saying, um. Well, interesting, man, but like, yeah, so like this wealth, they wouldn't have been able to acquire none of this wealth without the exploitation of all of these places around them. The people in the land, they, they, man, Europe, those, Europe probably would have been wiped off the map. Let's be quite honest about the situation, like Europe was stuck in it, uh pull up a map right now and show you. What Europe uh, you know, was going through during the fourteen, thirteen, fourteenth century, we already know the bubonic plague. Um was that wiped out like more than half of the population of Europe? And that was in the fourteenth century. Uh the Ottoman Empire was on, was to the east of Europe. And they were making their way all the way to the, they got as far as Vienna, I think, Vienna. And then you had um the Moors, right? Who had Europe, you know, uh even though Europe pushed the Moors out of Europe in fourteen ninety-two, um. What was the, where's, where, where, where's my people who know the history, uh was it Sowet- no, Sowetza is where they captured Soweta. But they pushed them out of, um what was the battle at? We, we ain't gotta talk history right now, but they pushed them out of the last stronghold that the Moors was at in Europe. And so, um after the last Moors was exiled in fourteen ninety, Granada, I think, I think it was Granada, but the last. Um Moors were exiled in fourteen ninety-two, but the Moors was still there in North Africa, you know, at the end of the day. The Europeans had no way to do any trade with, with Asia, with India, with China, so they were stuck. You know, and they was in constant warfare with, with the Moors. Um with um the Islamic empires, like the Ottoman Empire. So it was a point where they had nowhere to go, so they was like, okay, we gonna go across this ocean right here. And hopefully we can find something, we wanna get to India, China, but we need, we so, we're so desperate. You know, that's the state that Europe was in. I was gonna pull up a map, I don't need to do that, but that's the state that Europe was in, right? And so when they discovered, oh, they mean to say that, when they came in contact with the indigenous people of the Americas and said, hey, oh. You know, we got some land over here, it look like we can take these people and their land, right? And then they began to uh take African bodies out of the continent of Africa and bring them over to man's land. That's where all of the wealth came from. Jamaica, Britain, you know, Jamaica was the um, was the, was the um. They call it, the, sort of like Haiti, it was the, you know, the, the pure, the pearl, the pearl of their empire. You know, the pearl of the Antilles, that was Jamaica, that was Haiti. France and, and Britain was able to acquire all of their wealth from those colonies. As well as like the Americas before the Americas became the United States. But these were places, these little islands, man, were able to, you know, um uh help these European countries build all of it as well. So man, you know, I, I mean, that, that comment you made, it just made me go off, uh. This is why having uh, this is why having black educators and administrators in a public school system doesn't lead to liberation. Hell no, hell no, they've been miseducated and indoctrinated, these people are not, you know, by. These people are not, you know, about liberation, then when they go in there, if they're about liberation, they have to, you know, teach, they can't follow the curriculum, they gotta, ain't that like, in order to give our children a real education, we gotta go outside of the curriculum, you know, to and have and talk chat with the children? Like, that's ridiculous, man, that's ridiculous, because when you do that, you still have to teach the curriculum because there's gonna be tests and things like that, that you have to give them, that they have to pass in the statewide test. So now it's like this double education, which is a sacrifice that we have to make, you know, it is our duty to do that. But we shouldn't have to do that, this this is why it's important for us to develop our own educational system, not just schools, right? Independent schools is is a part of it, but we have to create our own educational system. This is actually something that I'm building with with a a few of my brothers and sisters, right? So we're planning a conference around independent education, so stay tuned for that. You know, hopefully sometime like next year, uh, but we're in the embryonic stages of um, of um, forming um, or uh, putting together this this conference with the goal of coming out of it with an educational system. So it's not just about us coming together and just talking about the problem, right? And 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 uh, and in theory, what solutions will look like? No, like it's about implementation, at least that's um, the idea that I'm shooting for. So, you know, the schools is definitely, you know, a problem. Emerson Wilson has multiple times, at um, Emerson Wilson has multiple times also explained why we are gullible, he has explained the psycho- psychological manipulation and how the brain operates to survive traumatic and hazardous circumstances, it's a fact, man. That's deep right there. He has explained the psychological manipulate, psychological manipulation and how the brain operates to survive in traumatic and hazardous circumstances. I'd love to hear more more about that, cause I'm just thinking, um, so that's like, we're we're trying, so is that like a good? I guess with the survival part is good, right? Like our brain is that advanced, it's, you know, developing ways to survive within all of this. But there's this damage that is being done at the same time, right? There's there's some deep, you know, to to discuss. Lot to say, I'm just trying to keep it, keep it minimal. That's the strategy of domestic violence too, physical is an initial step that moves to threaten and other tactics. Facts, yeah, yeah. So you, I mean, y'all, y'all get it, y'all see what Dr. Emerson Wilson is laying out, and this is just the first chapter, this is the setup. But the idea is, you know, he wants somebody to read this and be conscious of all of the strategies and methods that are being used against us. So now he's gonna get into, well, not 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 necessarily in the next chapter. He's gonna get, in the next chapter, he's gonna get into some of the institutions and so forth, but as we go further into the book, now it's like, okay, we're conscious of what's being done and um, and what strategies and methods are being used against us. Now, this is what we do to counter that, that's why this book is beautiful, man, like when we get into it. This is what we do to counter that, right? And he talked about that early on, too, I think in the next chapter, he does. And and the next chapter or the chapter after that, he does talk about um, developing a sort of governing body, national governing body. And he quotes from um, uh, Dr. Kwame, uh, what's the, who wrote Nation Building, who wrote Nation Building? I was just, just at his conference, too. Let me pull this book up. And and um, and and this ancestor, you know, he transitioned over the um, like the plandemic. But this is another one of our ancestors that, man, you know, I I wish I would have been introduced to him uh, early, early on. About to pull it up now, uh, Kwame Okoto, yeah, Okoto. This brother right here, if you, if you're into Dr. Emerson Wilson, you must, must pick up this brother's work on nation building. And if you see the community that he has helped establish, I'm talking about some real nation building, you know, examples. This brother right here, this book right here, Nation Building, I will lie to you, not, I'm telling you right now, if you're not familiar with this brother and the community that he has built. And you probably, you know, unless you're like in in the inside, you probably don't know, but I'm I'm telling you, like, people think that work isn't being done, work is being done. Work is being done on a large scale, too. And so, you know, like they say, revolution won't be televised, I don't wanna say too much, but that brother right there, pick up that brother's uh, book if you haven't read that already, must read. Dr. Emerson Wilson quotes uh, this book and The Blueprint for Black Power, so you know, you know it's real. Alright, uh, man, this was powerful, I I love, you know, um, you know, being able to have this talk. Appreciate you all tuning in, being a part of this discussion. Uh, I'm gonna keep going, you know, so we going, chapter two is where, no, I'm gonna do a summary of chapter one. And um, and I'm gonna do chapter two when I finish the summary. So I'm probably do a couple of paragraphs from chapter two, if I can do it before next Sunday, I will. But uh, next Sunday at nine o'clock, uh, I will be doing the podcast. But you know, if you subscribe, make sure you tap in, look for the next time we doing this. And we should be back with our podcast, too, on Saturday at ten. Uh, the last couple of weekends, we've been really, um, all of us, uh, from Frank to Natasha, we've been uh, really busy with our schedules, and so that Saturday, uh, wasn't working for us. Uh, but we'll be back next Saturday, we're continuing with the ISIS papers. Uh, the ISIS papers, y'all probably forgot, but that's what we on right now. Uh, so we'll be on the ISIS papers for about uh, two or three more weeks. Uh, so make sure you tune in Saturday at ten AM, so again, appreciate you all. Uh, so peace, peace, so huru, amani, till next time.